Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay of Maloney and Moore's Parade in Monte Carlo. The acronym is ANPAC and the Chief Judge of Constable Court. Today is Class 144, Class 144. What did we learn in Class 143? Well, the bottom line is, we're just simply learning the truth, right? When you know the truth, the truth shall set you free, right? So speaking of freedom, it is very interesting to me that as we were finishing up in Class 143, that we recognized that the National Grand Sheiks, right? And most likely, the Grand Sheiks, right? And the Supreme Grand Governors have always known that the Moors have been adopted by the United States of America under the Naturalization Act, right? So since now that the Moors are finding out that the Grand Sheiks know specifically that the Moors have been naturalized, and naturalization means, what, adoption? So therefore, the Moors have been adopted as Americans, which means we're not the true Americans, we are adopted Americans. So the question is, okay, then what was our original nationality if in fact we were adopted? Who's our original family? And our family is what? Morocco for who? Moroccans. And the Grand Sheiks have always known this, right? Now, you must always understand, when you say the word "Grand Sheik" or "Grand Governor", this is just a semantics word. Because it also means what? Anybody who calls themselves what? Ministers, right? Priests, right? Et cetera. As we all know, Farhad Mohammed of the Nation Islam studied with Noor Drahili. So if Farhad Mohammed was studying with Noor Drahili, that means Farhad Mohammed also knew that we were Moroccans. So if Farhad Mohammed, Elijah Mohammed, and Louis Farrakhan, et cetera, turn around and say, "We're black, we're the proud black men", well, that in itself is what? Fraud! So when I take a look at the situation, I said, "Well, the Moors Americans are always calling out Louis Farrakhan." As if Louis Farrakhan is not telling the black man the truth. Louis Farrakhan, the Nation Islam prized themselves on telling all our people that we are proud black people, and we all know that's a falsehood, because there's no such thing as black people as a nationality. But the more I started thinking about it, I said, "Hmm", all this time, Louis Farrakhan always knew that the Moors Americans were full of crap as well. So here it is, Louis Farrakhan is not telling the people the truth that they're Moroccans, because Louis Farrakhan teacher is Elijah Mohammed, Elijah Mohammed's teacher is Farhad Mohammed, and Farhad Mohammed's teacher is Noor Drahili, and Noor Drahili said we're descendants of Moroccans. But at the same time, the Moors Americans, after Noor Drahili is deceased, the Moors Americans in 1930 come out and start telling everybody that we're who? Former Moors. And now we've been Americanized under Resolution 75 of the Moors Science Temple of Philadelphia has signed some crap letter with the city of Philadelphia to say that the Moors are now Americans. Now they call themselves Moors Americans, which is a hybrid, a compound adjective. So Louis Farrakhan is looking at the Moors Science Temple, saying, "You're not telling the people that they're Moroccans." And the Moors Americans are looking at Louis Farrakhan, saying, "You're not telling the people they're Moroccans." So the Nation Islam not telling the people the truth that they're Moroccans, and the Moors Americans not telling the people the truth that they're Moroccans. So therefore, let me say this to the Moors Americans, especially the Grand Sheiks. Stop talking smack about Louis Farrakhan. If in fact, you're gonna continue to lie and deceive the Moors by telling the Moors that they're Moors Americans and that they're the true Americans, all that is a fabrication of the Nation of Morocco. So I'm telling all the Moors Americans, whether it's the students or the Grand Sheiks, stop pointing fingers at Louis Farrakhan if in fact, you're not gonna course correct and tell the people that they're absolutely Moroccans and not Americans. When you start telling the truth to the people and telling they're Moroccans instead of Americans, then maybe Louis Farrakhan start telling the truth to the people and telling they're Moroccans as well. You see, I've been doing the research, and I'm realizing our Carbonated People are all full of crap. We have delayed our own justice. We've done this to ourselves. And everybody's pointing fingers at everybody, and nobody's willing to tell the truth as long as they're making money. We've sold each other out while constantly pointing fingers at the white man. Constantly talking about reparations. You don't even realize your reparations should come in the form of taxation, but the reality is, your reparations is right beneath your feet. You're walking, literally walking on your reparations every day. It's called the Empire Morocco, the land, the territory. Your reparations is underneath your feet. Your treasury is underneath your feet. And the United States of America owes taxes in order to remain in Morocco. They have to pay in order to stay. This is what they agreed to in multiple treaties. Go back and look at your treaties, but guess what? Moors American Grand Sheiks never talked to Moors about the Treaty of Madrid that talked about taxes and naturalization of the Moors. The Moors American teachers never talked to Moors about the Act of Al-Dosers of 1906. The Moors American teacher never told the Moors about the Treaty of Fairs of 1912. The Moors American teachers have never told the Moors about France versus United States of America of 1952. The Moors American teachers have never told the Moors that they were adopted. So how the hell do you expect Louis Farrakhan to do anything to tell the truth when the Grand Sheiks haven't even told the truth? This is terrible. This has gotta stop. This propaganda and selling out our people has gotta stop. And it's going to stop. Because the Empire Morocco is gonna restore itself. The Empire Morocco will have an obligation to enact legislation that puts an end to propaganda, because the propaganda is creating hardships amongst our people. Moors Americans are going to jail by the thousands, everywhere. They're losing their houses, they're losing their cars, they're losing their jobs, they're losing their children. Now you got these people out here talking about, "Oh, we're the real Indians." So next thing you know, all these so-called Indians that call themselves Cherokees, I just heard the other day, some fake Indians talking about, "Oh, you gotta get a birth certificate from us. We'll sign your birth certificate. Don't get a birth certificate from the United States. We'll give you a Cherokee Nation birth certificate." Guess what's gonna really happen? All these people that's claiming to be Indians, they're gonna lose what? They're gonna lose their cars, their houses, their children, and their freedom. Just like the Moors Americans, it's starting all over again. And I wanna say this for the record. Moors Americans, stop getting mad at Rare Bird and Rod Hayes. Rare Bird and Rod Hayes was not invented in a vacuum. Rare Bird and Rod Hayes learned everything they learned. They learned from the Moors Americans' package selling. Rare Bird said it herself. She said, "I studied with the Moors Americans first." Then she ran off and started her own type of package selling program under the word "Indian". I heard Rare Bird myself say, she said, "Well, I just chose Cherokee 'cause everybody knows the word Cherokee." She literally said that out loud. "I just chose Cherokee. I could've chose any word. I just chose Cherokee, 'cause a lot of people say the word Cherokee." Now she calls herself Her Majesty of the Cherokees, 'cause she just plucked some word out of the air. "Yeah, I like Cherokee, I'll just pick that." Now she's selling what? Birth certificates? She'll pretty soon be selling Cherokee National Identification Cards. She'll be selling packages, just like who? Just like the Moors Americans. I know Moors Americans are citizens, but I challenge any of the Moors Americans out there, listen to Rod Hayes and how Rare Bird talk. They talk just like Moors Americans. Rare Bird has exchanged the word "Moors American" for the word "Indian". She just changed the word, but it's the same old pitch. Rod Hayes has exchanged the word "mother" for saying, "Who, what, Big Mama." It's the same pitch, different words. Same old con artists, con artists, packages. And now you're gonna get black people caught up 'cause they talking about, "I ain't gonna get no birth certificate. I'm gonna let Rare Bird give me a birth certificate to say I'm a sovereign soul." Rare Bird run around and said she's a sovereign soul. She said she's not even a citizen of nothing. She said, "I'm just a sovereign soul." S-O-U-L, sovereign soul. We're gonna talk about sovereignty today. We're gonna look up the definition of it, because no one talks about the definition of sovereignty. I'm gonna say it again to you, Moors Americans. Don't get upset with Rare Bird, right? Dane Callaway, Top Cat, Young Elder, Rod Hayes. I'm telling all the Moors Americans, don't get upset with them, because the Moors Americans created Rod Hayes and Rare Bird. The Moors Americans created. I'm telling the truth. I guarantee you, go back and listen to Rod Hayes and Rare Bird, how they talk. It's a Moors American pitch. They just changed up the words, the Indian and Big Mama. That's the only difference. Now they selling packages. Who'd they learn all this from? RDBa Publications and Tashri Bay. It's that whole mother-son act. It's the mother-son act, you see? Tashri Bay acts like the son, and then he got women around him talking about, "I got the mother with me." Okay, what did Rare Bird and Rod Hayes do? See, that's the mother-son act. It's just repeating itself. Where did they learn this from? Moors Americans. Next thing you know, Rod Hayes and Rare Bird gonna have a whole website selling Indian books and Indian feathers and Indian prayer cloths and Indian birth certificate, Indian nationality cards, all kind of stuff, just like RDBa Publications. And guess what's gonna happen? The same result that the Moors Americans been getting to going to jail, losing their cars, losing their houses, becoming homeless, being jailed. That's the same thing will happen to these so-called Cherokee people. They already go to jail. They will lose their cars, lose their houses, lose their children. Let me just say this for the record. When black America, I'm talking to you, black America, you're gonna start losing your children when you have your child at the hospital or you try to have your child at the house. You're going to lose your children following these con artists who telling you to get a birth certificate from them to pay them some Patreon to get some fictitious documents. You're gonna get hit with child endangerment. A lot of you sisters out there, and I love the sisters, I love my people, I love Carbonated People. So what I'm saying is, because I'm saying this out of love, you're about to get caught up messing around with Moors Americans, and you're gonna get caught up messing around with Rare Bird and Rod Hayes selling you these fictitious packages. I don't want you to ever come back and say, "I didn't know." Now, now you know. I'm trying to tell everybody, it should be a class action lawsuit against all these Moors American package sellers, and it should be a class action lawsuit against all these people who selling this fake Indian paperwork. It should be a class action lawsuit, because it's gonna be a lot of hardships. Keep talking about the mothers, you got love for the mothers. No, you don't. You're lying to our sisters when you're telling them to get some fake birth certificate from you, Rare Bird. And when these women start losing their children to the system 'cause the city and the state, the charter states gonna come in and take these babies away from these mothers. And where you gonna be at, Rare Bird? What you gonna do to save them? Nothing. Where you gonna be at, Rod Hayes, to help these mothers who lose their children when the sheriff and the police come take this child for child endangerment? Child neglect. Child gonna end up at some foster care home because the mother thinks she's an Indian. The mother thinks she's Moors American. I saw on YouTube where a couple filmed everything. The woman was pregnant, they had the baby at the house, they delivered the child at the house, and turned around and gave the child Moors American birth certificate. Posted all that, I think, on Facebook and YouTube, and somebody reported them. And guess what the city came in and did? Took the baby. And now they talking about, "We're Moors Americans. You stole our child, you kidnapped our child." This is madness. I love, I love all of the Carbonated People. The reason why I'm talking about this is not to troll anyone, not to try to undermine anyone. I'm trying to tell the people the truth. You're being deceived and lied to. I'm Jay Bay, I'm a man of law, I'm a law man. All I do is show reference points of law, law, law. I'm trying to tell you, black America, please, listen to me. You're not Moors Americans, and you're not Indians. And these people are lying to you. I can prove it every day of the week with law. They don't wanna tell you the truth. I'll tell you the truth. This is why they don't challenge me. They don't challenge me, because they would have to challenge the information. They know the information is too strong. They know I stand on the principles of law, but they stand on the principles of package selling. They're all con artists. And I can prove it every day of the week, and they know it too. So I'm saying to my sisters out there, please, don't get caught up with Rare Bird and Rod Hayes. Don't do it, you're gonna lose your children. I say to black America, don't get caught up with Moors Americans, because that's not a nationality, it's a religious corporation. The nationality of these Moors is actually Moroccans, but the FBI has gotten involved and pumped all these Moors at the temple, and they went out there to all the Moors that they are the true Americans. So the Moors Americans have been pumped. Now they going out here lying to the people. Let me tell everybody something. The United States has been desperately trying to figure out how to keep the Moors from waking up to figure out their true nationality of being Moroccans, even though Noor Drahili already told us that we're descendants of Moroccans. Noor Drahili never said we were descendants of Americans. Never, he never said that. So why are the Moors American Grand Sheiks telling all the Moors they're Americans? It's because the FBI and the CIA got smart under COINTELPRO, Counter Intelligence Program. What was the counter intelligence? They was like, "Dang, we ain't even made it to stop these Moors from finding out they're Moors. So what can we do to keep them from rising up and reclaiming their airship to the Empire Morocco?" They said, "Oh, I got it. Get the overseers to tell the Moors that they're Americans. Get all the Grand Sheiks to tell the Moors and tell black people that they are American, because the United States has jurisdiction over anyone that's American." The whole time the United States game was to keep the Moors to keep saying that we're Americans. So they talking about this word called "Moors American", but "Moors American" has a hyphen, like when a woman gets married, she hyphenates her name. So you "Moors American", the "American" is the new political status in the word "Moors American". Your political status now what? American. Now the United States don't even have to do nothing. The Grand Sheiks is doing all the work for the United States. Let me tell the people something. The United States loves it when you say you're Moors American. They love it when you say you're Indian. Because when you say you're Indian, you come under jurisdiction of who? The parent state called the United States of America. When you say you're Moors American, you come under jurisdiction of United States of America. When you say you're Native American, you come under jurisdiction, United States of America. The whole game's about jurisdiction. So you got Rare Bird and Rod Hayes and Young Elder and Top Cats, Dane Callaway telling you, "You're the Native American." You got Moors Americans running around telling you, "You're the Moors American, and you're the true American." But yet, all the treaties that the United States is signing keep saying that you're Moroccans. And they turn around and tell the overseers that look just like you, that are Carbonated, "Yeah, go tell your people they're Americans." That's what happened. So I'm talking to my sisters out there, please, my sisters. 'Cause you're the ones gonna deal with the biggest hardship. You're gonna deal with significant pain when you lose your children to these con artists that look just like us, they're Carbonated Con Artists. They're in the art of conning their own people. I will teach you today what you should know. If you wanna know the truth on how for us to get our rights back, when you say, "No justice, no peace", I can show you how to get justice. I can show you how to get reparations, 'cause reparations is a generic word. Reparations is an umbrella word for what? Reparation means to repair, but how do you repair something? There's several ways to repair something under international law, it's called what? Restitution, compensation, right? Restitution, compensation includes what? Also satisfaction. International law recognizes the word. Reparation is compensation, restitution, and then what? Satisfaction. These are words in international law that's already been set forth. All you gotta go and do is look up the responsibility of states for internationally wrongful acts of the year 2001. Look it up, it's United Nations resolutions already guaranteed for the Carbonated People to get reparations. But you can also look up what? The responsibility of international organizations for internationally wrongful acts of the year 2011. It also talks about what? Reparations, compensation, restitution, right? Satisfaction, and it also talks about getting interest on your money. But what did we have to do as a people? What was the first thing we had to do as a people? We have to restore the wrong of what we've done to ourselves. First, reparations is paid to a state. This is all we have to do as a people is to repatriate back to the state. What state? It's called the Empire Morocco, and the United States has always known this. The first reparations was for you to do on your own to repatriate back to the state. Once you repatriate back to the state, then the state can now bring suit against a belligerent state to get reparations, which is payable to a state. It's a state-on-state dispute. Rare Bird is stateless. Moors Americans are stateless because they're using non-deears as if they're not citizens anymore, of nothing. That makes you stateless. So the reason why I went on that rant is because I'm tired of seeing Carbonated People get screwed over by Carbonated People. We're going to fix this, we're gonna fix it. There's gonna be lawsuits in the future. There will be lawsuits. I'm prepping all the Moors, especially the Moors who out here stealing from the people and lying to the people. Under the Act of Al-Dosers, Article 102, it gives the Empire Morocco the right to have jurisdiction over all Moors subjects who breach Moroccan law. We will pass laws that stop this type of propaganda. It will come to an end. You're gonna stop hurting Carbonated People all so you can make a few dollars. You're gonna stop hurting our people. I feel sorry for my sisters out here. The sisters are trying to find a way to bring some remedy into their life. And they're trying to trust other people that look like them, and they don't realize these other people are vampires. You do know vampires come in different complexions. Moors Americans are pictured like the vampires only pale face. That ain't true. Vampires come in different complexions. They look just like me and you, and you don't know the difference, and you welcome them into your life, and then they take all of your utility, they take your resources, and once they take your money, just like any scam artist, they disappear. This is why RDBa Publications will turn around and tell you, "Look, you get these documents, it's all on you after that. Don't call me when you get caught up." Doesn't that sound like a scammer? Rare Bird and Rod Hayes is not gonna come and have your back when the people come in and take your children. I'm telling you that right now. They're scammers. And they wanna challenge me on this information, they know where to find me, I ain't hard to find. Set up the panel that show the whole world your legal arguments versus my legal arguments. Ain't nothing about that run in your mouth for two hours, just sitting there talking and talking and talking. Ain't got no reference points. Ain't teaching the people nothing about law. You wanna fix something, you better study law, 'cause states are about law. This stuff is gonna stop. I'm tired of seeing my people get injured. The Empire Morocco is gonna rise up, and we're gonna put a lot of people down right where they belong. Let's get into the class. As the Moors know, I always open up the Constitution. The Constitution is paramount. One of the reasons why the Constitution is paramount 'cause it gets to set up the government, and the government gets to set up the three branches of government, which is the what? Executive branch, legislative branch, and judicial branch. So we need a judicial branch so we can adjudicate all these propagandists. That's the reason why the Constitution is needed, so we can act laws. And when people breach the law, they will get indicted, and if found guilty, they will be adjudicated. That's why we need a Constitution. Let's continue. As the Moors know, we've been talking about International Court of Justice. The Moors are old taxes, right? Some people say taxes, some people say reparations, right? Which is just compensation, right? But taxes is also a compensation, right? Because the Moors, the Empire Morocco is being compensated for the fact that the United States of America is still what? Residing in Morocco. So you have to pay the state, right? So we've been going over this case, right? We've been talking about taxes. But the title is International Court of Justice, right? Case Concerning Rights of Nationals of the United States of America in Morocco, France versus United States of America, the judgment of August 27, 1952. Now, let me ask a question. We already know that the case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco, so United States of America is in Morocco, so the state of the United States of America is in the state, it's under a protection status in Morocco. We're talking jurisdiction. So the United States of America is always bearing protections of the Empire Morocco. But let me ask a question. Why does it say "in the empire of Morocco"? Why does it say "case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in the empire of Morocco"? Why does it say "empire of Morocco"? You know why I didn't say that? Because there was no need to say it, because in 1952, everybody knew the word "Morocco" meant "empire". There was no ambiguity, there was no vagueness. Everybody knew Morocco meant "empire". However, after 1956, what happened? Mohammed the Fifth becomes king, and he creates a small, Odey Passidus jurisdiction called what? Kingdom of Morocco. So he made a distinction- So he made a distinction between his small little parcel of land versus the empire of Morocco. So now, the Moors have to now add the word empire Morocco to make distinction between the empire and the kingdom. Other than that, back in 1952, you didn't have to make that distinction because in 1952, there was no kingdom of Morocco. So therefore, distinction wasn't needed to be made. You see? So it was summary of the case, we're just gonna recap, and I know the Moors wanna talk about taxes, right? So, so in the recap, right, here's the summary of the judgment, okay? So the case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco, right? So the state commonly knows the United States of America is in Morocco, and all of its national, commonly known as Americans, are also in Morocco, it's called jurisdiction, right? Okay, so, so as a recap, it's, it's good to refresh ourselves. Does the United States of America owe the empire Morocco taxes? Well, the answer is yes. Why? Because the treaties say so, but it was confirmed and reaffirmed in 1952. All right, now, you know, we, uh, section six and seven of the summary.
Six, by six votes to five. No treaty provides any basis for the claim of the United States to fiscal immunity for its citizens, nor can such an immunity capitulatory in origin be justified by the effect of the most favored nation clause, since no other state enjoys it for the benefit of its nationals.
Okay, so the United States of America had to go to the World Court of the ICJ cause France brought them into court, cause at the time, France was controlling the PNB with a representative, i.e. the power would turn on behalf of the Empire Morocco. So France now takes the United States of America to court to say, hey, you owe taxes to the Empire Morocco, all right? So section six says yes. The judge is voting six votes to five, that says no, the United States does not have fiscal, fiscal immunity. Neither does its citizens of the United States. So both the entity, right, the legal personality of the United States of America as a legal personality, and then a legal personality known as the United States as a totally separate legal personality, as well as the citizens, which is another legal personality, right? So the state, its government, and its people all have to pay taxes to the Empire Morocco, and none of those three legal personalities, whether it's the the United States of America's legal personality, or the United States federal government as a legal personality, or its citizens as a legal personality. All three of those legal personalities owe taxes to the Empire Morocco, they're not immune. Okay, section seven.
Seven, by seven votes to four. As to the consumption taxes imposed by the day here of February 28th of 1948, these are payable on all goods, whether imported into Morocco or produced there. They are not, therefore, customs duties. The maximum rate for which was fixed at twelve and a half percent by the signatory powers of the Act of Aldisara's. Citizens of the United States are no more exempt from these taxes than from any others.
All right, so section seven also talks about specifically, talking about, uh, consumption taxes, custom duties, et cetera. But at the end of the day, according to the treaties, right? Such as the Treaty of Madrid of 1880, and according to the Act of Aldisara's of 1906, these are treaties that the United States of America signed and agreed to pay taxes to the Empire Morocco. Therefore, their citizens, the citizens of the United States are no more exempt from these taxes than from any other. So therefore, the citizens have to pay taxes, and the United States legal personality, it's called a federal corporation, has to pay, as well as the United States of America, all three of them have to pay. And that's the bottom line, and that was confirmed in 1952, right? But the question is, who does the United States of America have to pay the taxes to? What's the name of the legal personality? And that's the Empire Morocco, right? So here's the deal, as we've been building up. The Moors needed to establish a constitution for the Empire Morocco. That was the only way to do what? To restore the state. The Empire Morocco's been in a shallow grave. The only way to do what? To raise it up, right? To emerge as a sovereign independent state, you need a constitution that sets forth what? The government on behalf of the people. So once you have the constitution, now the constitution now reestablishes or reinstates the state. Now the state is going to be restored and reestablished. Now the United States of America can pay taxes to who? The empire of Morocco. That was one of the main purposes why we needed the Constitution, cause it reinstates the state. That way, the United States of America can write checks to the Empire Morocco because the Empire Morocco's the name on the contract that the United States of America agreed to pay the high contracting party, commonly known as the Empire Morocco. The United States of America never agreed to pay taxes to the Moors signed his temple. The United States of America never signed a contract where they said they'll pay taxes to black America. The United States of America never signed a contract to say they will pay taxes to some fake Cherokee state. However, the United States of America has absolutely signed a contract with the Empire Morocco to pay taxes to the sovereign external parent state, commonly known as the Empire Morocco, right? So now that we know that, we're working backwards, right? We're just looking at the tail there and say, okay, does the United States of America owe the Moors taxes? Well, yes, but what about the Moors? Who, who does the United States of America actually owe the taxes to? Now that we looked at the back end and saw that the ICJ confirmed it, now, what do the Moors have to do? Now they have to do, reinstate the state, the Empire Morocco, in order to set up the procedural law, to get to a point to be able to collect the taxes and bring it back to the state, right? Okay, so therefore, we need the Constitution. And with the Constitution allows us to do what? As a recap, set up the government, right? Set up the government, right, for the Empire Morocco, which is the external sovereign independent state, to reinstate the Sultan, which is head of state. Then we can set up the executive branch, legislative branch, and judicial branch. But let, let me, let me tell this to black America. Who's been, who's now gonna spend their money, their notes, their electronic funds on trying to get some fake birth certificates from some fake Indian nation. Guess what, black America, I'm talking to you, especially my sisters out there. Please, my sisters, listen now. The Empire Morocco's gonna establish an executive branch and a legislative branch, okay? Through the executive branch, the prime minister and the wazir council, which is all the governors sending together the roundtable, and the executive branch, they're gonna establish what's commonly known as administration. Through the administration, we will set up a, a birth certificate or a birth record to recognize your child as being Moroccan. But it would be done in the lawful way because the Moors have a right to decolonize and reestablish their state. A state, a state is sovereign, let me say it again. States are sovereign in international law. People are not sovereign all by themselves. I'll say it again. States are sovereign in international law. People are not sovereign all by themselves. The state extends sovereignty to the government, so the government can operate on behalf of the state. And then the state also extends a limited sovereignty to the people cause it recognizes the people as being the national standing of said state, such as you'll be Moroccan in Morocco. But the only way to be Moroccan, the state has to recognize you as being Moroccan. The state has to extend that sovereignty to you. The state has a right to choose whether you're gonna be a national or not. And this is why the sovereignty is in the hands of the state, and the state sets up a government and the executive branch, the administrat- administration of the government, then starts to set forth reforms and laws that starts to recognize who's gonna be a Moroccan national of the state or not. So to all my sisters out there, if you really don't want your children to be born in the jurisdiction of the United States of America, then you need to inquire about your, your well-settled principles of rights you already had. You're Moors, i.e. Moroccans, you ain't black and you ain't Cherokee. You're Moroccans in Morocco, who are trying to reestablish the state, cause the state already have rights. But we have to reinstate the government, then where the government can put together forms, reforms, such as birth certificates. That way, your child will be lawfully recognized by the state as being a national upset state, such as the Empire Morocco, that's the name of the state. Therefore, the nationality is Moroccan. But you got these fake people out here telling you, oh, I can, I can do a birth certificate for you because you're, you're, you're sovereign all by yourself. The word sovereign means soul, S-O-U-L. This is what Rare Bird's running around telling everybody, sovereign means soul. Notice she won't read no law out loud. Tell Rare Bird to read that out loud based in law. She won't read it? She's just making stuff up. You know how she, you know how I know? You know who she learned that from? Rosmaria Bay of Artie May Publications. Rosmaria Bay runs around talking about, a state is your state of mind. Sovereignty is you by yourself. Oh, but you can't blame Rosmaria Bay, why not? Because who's her teacher? Tashri Bay. So the apple don't fall fro- far from the tree. The apple does not fall far from the tree. So now Rare Bird is just parroting what she heard Rosmaria Bay said. So now Rare Bird just changed the word from Moorish American to Indian, and she's pitching this crap to people to say, "Oh, sovereignty means it's you, it's your mental, you're the being, this is divine." Okay, it's divine, all right. Until you find your behind locked up in jail, your children gonna get, get taken away from you. "Oh, they kidnapped my baby." That's not true, you're lying to the people. You're lying to the people. The reality is, when you don't have your child recognized by a state, this, the baby becomes what he needs, leave, stateless. You need documentation for the baby to be recognized by the state. What state on planet Earth is claiming your baby? Tell me the name of the state that's claiming your child. You say, "Well, I don't want the United States of America claiming my child." Okay, then tell me the name of the state that is claiming your child in. Rare Bird is stateless. So she's signing documents fraudulently, cause she ain't a part of the state. Tashri Bay is stateless. Rosmaria Bay is stateless. Light Bay is stateless, when they call themselves Moorish Americans. They claiming some political status that don't exist. There's no Moorish American nationality, there's no Moorish American state, the state is sovereign. So when you, when you sign some paperwork, tell them, "This document says my child is Moorish American." Okay, what's the state called, Moorish America? Where's its government? Where's its executive branch? Legislative branch, judicial branch, it don't exist. Oh, I signed some, some birth certificate that says my child's a Cherokee, uh, a part of Cherokee state. Then Rare Bird trying to tell you, well, it's really not a state, the state is you. Cause, cause sovereignty means soul, so it's all on you. So I signed your paperwork, here you go, but don't come back asking me on how to protect you in that paperwork. In other words, birth certificates are tied to what? A state, it's an attachment to the state. And this is what people don't understand, why? Because these teachers don't teach statehood. They don't. I'm teaching statehood. This is statehood right here. Speaking of sovereignty, I'm going to look up the definition of sovereignty in Black's Law Dictionary, fourth edition. Because Rare Bird and Rosmaria Bay are not gonna read this out loud to you. And I think it's shameful because they proclaim themselves as being matriarchs and they're lying to the matriarchs. This is shameful. So I'm asking Dr. G, Rosmaria Bay, and Rare Bird to read this definition out loud to the people. If you wanna talk sovereignty, you wanna talk statehood, read this out loud. Noah from the top.
Sovereignty, the supreme, absolute, and uncontrollable power by which any independent state is governed. Supreme political authority, paramount control of the Constitution and frame of government and its administration. The self-sufficient source of political power from which all specific political powers are derived. The international independence of a state, combined with the right and power of regulating its internal affairs without foreign dictation. Also, a political society or state which is sovereign and independent.
All right. So what, what did we learn already? Okay, sovereignty has something to do with what? What, what does sovereignty have something to do with? It has something to do with a constitution, right? It also has something to do with what? Political authority, you see that? Political, political, political authority, based upon what? The Constitution, right? But what does, what does political mean? Let, let's identify that word quickly, all right? So we're talking sovereignty, what does political mean? Okay, Noah from the top.
Political is an adjective, one, relating to the government or the public affairs of a country.
Pause, read it again.
Political is an adjective, one, relating to the government or the political affairs of a country.
Read it again.
Political is an adjective, one, relating to the government or the political affairs of a country.
All right, so political means an adjective, right? Relating to the government or the public affairs of a country, so a country is what? A state. So when you say the word political, it's tied to what? The government on behalf of what? The state. So political means the government, right? Take care of public affairs, public laws on behalf of the state. So political means a government that's enacting public laws, public affairs on behalf of the state. That's what political means, right? Okay, let's, let's go back to definition of sovereignty. So when you're talking sovereignty, and you see the word political authority, they're talking about what? The government of what? Of what? The state. And the state has what? A constitution. So political is about the administration of the government. So political authority is the administration, like the Trump administration or the Biden administration or the Obama administration. That's what? That's his administration, that's the government, right? That's the political authority is the administration, which is the government of the Constitution, right? But what is it saying sovereignty is vested in? It's invested into what? The state. From the top, Noah, again.
Sovereignty, the supreme, absolute, and uncontrollable power by which any independent state is governed.
Pause, read it again.
Sovereignty, the supreme, absolute, and uncontrollable power by which any independent state is governed.
So the sovereignty is vested into the state, and the state ha- is supreme. The str- the state is absolute. The state has uncontrollable power. The state is independent. The state is independent, not the people. The people get independence because the state extends sovereignty and independence to the people. Once the people declare their independence, then they put the sovereignty to the hands of the state. That way, the state can control what? An organized dual society, equal laws and equity amongst all the people. It keeps things equitable amongst all the people, that way, all the people can be governed by one principle of law. From the top again.
Sovereignty, the supreme, absolute, and uncontrollable power by which an independent state is governed. Supreme political authority, paramount control of the Constitution and frame of government and its administration.
Pause, so does Rare Bird, huh? Does Rare Bird have a constitution? Does Rare Bird have an administration, right? Does Rare Bird have a state? Does Red Bird have an administration, right? Does Red Bird have a state? No. She telling all the people, your state is your soul, S-O-U-L. You say anything up there about soul? No. You think anybody Rosmaria Bay running around talking about your state is your mental? No, your state is your constitution and the political authority of the administration of what? The state, because the state is independent. The foolishness. And these people call themselves matriarchs, teaching other matriarchs. Oh, we need to take the power of the patriarchs hand. The patriarch is teaching the truth. The matriarchs are teaching lies to other matriarchs. And this is the truth. I'm pointing it out right here. I've challenged Rosmaria Bay or Red Bird to step up and challenge this information. They ain't gonna do it. They're not gonna read this out loud to the other matriarchs and say, oh man, I found out sovereignty means state and constitution and we need a three branches of government. They'll never admit this to all the matriarchs out there. They'll never tell them. Because they've been lying for so long, they don't know how to course correct. They, they don't know how to do it. And while they're constantly lying to the other, uh, uh, matriarchs, turn around and throw the patriarchs underneath the bus like we did all the problems. But yes, the matriarchs out here teaching falsehoods and I'm sitting up here trying to teach the truth, the undeniable truth, the substantive law. These are principles of law. I'm a law man. And I stand on that truth. But ain't nobody gonna challenge this information. They wanna keep making money off them packages. See, if they tell you the truth, then they can't make no money no more. You see what I'm saying? And while the people are getting injured by the day, Moors are going to jail by the hundreds and thousands. Now, people gonna run around with feathers on, they gonna start going to jail as well. Watch what I'm telling you. Okay, no, from the top, we gotta get this right. Because the Moors have been lied to for so long and now the lie is starting all over from an Indian perspective. First, the Moorish Americans lied and they didn't know what the hell they was talking about. Now, here come these people claiming to be Indians and now they're keeping the same old lie going on under a different name. Let's talk sovereignty, alright? From the top.
Sovereignty, the supreme, absolute, and uncontrollable power by which an independent state is governed. Supreme political authority, paramount control of the constitution, and frame of government and its administration. The self-sufficient source of political power from which all specific political powers are derived. The international independence of a state combined with the right and power of regulating its internal affairs without foreign dictation.
Pause. So sovereignty is about the state, so I'm gonna pick it up right here. The self-sufficient source of political power, talking power, powers derived from the state. From which all specific political powers are derived. So where's all the powers that the people derive from? The state. But the state needed what? A constitution and it also need an administration, i.e. the three branches of government. In order to do what? In order to have what? Political power, right? You want specific political powers, all, then all your specific political powers are derived from the states and not from your mental. Power is not abstract. Power is manifest through a state. Then it continues to say, combined with the right and power regulating its internal affairs without foreign dictation. So no foreigner can come in and do what? Can violate the state integrity of your domains. No foreigner, no foreign state can violate your state constitution. It will be, it will be an internationally wrongful act. You see? Let's continue. From here.
The power to do everything in a state without accountability to make laws, to execute and to apply them. To impose and collect taxes and levy contributions. To make war or peace, to form treaties of alliance or of commerce with foreign nations and the like.
Pause. So the sovereignty is about the power to do everything in a state, not in your state of mind? The power is through the power to do everything in a state, what? Constitution. Through the administration of the three branches of government. That's where the power is derived from, the state and the government. From the top, so the power to do everything in a state without accountability to make laws, right? So the, the state can make laws through its legislative branch and then fully ratified by the executive branch. To execute and to apply them. So the state can apply the law. Right? Ain't no individual can run around talking about they got their own laws. This is why they keep calling you sovereign citizen. When they call people sovereign citizen, people don't even understand what the, what the cops are saying. They saying you trying to act like you're a state all by yourself. You trying to act like you're the state, you're the head of state, you're the executive branch, legislative branch, judicial branch, all rolled up in one human being. You're the state all by yourself. So they call you sovereign citizen because you're the state, you're the government, and you're the citizen all at the same time. So what they're doing is that they're labeling, trying to label you as a sovereign citizen, they're basically saying you're an idiot. They basically saying you're, you're a fool. And you don't realize you're fooling yourself because someone has, has, has sold you a bill of goods. And you run around here talking about you, you're a national of your own mental. Then next you know you got some silver handcuffs on, you going to jail. And the worst part is these, I'm talk, I'm talking to my sisters. Sisters, I love y'all. It's the reason why I'm all amped up right now. Because I'm tired of seeing y'all get damaged because you're trusting these other so-called sisters. You think they're telling you the truth. They're lying to you. They're gonna get your babies taken away from you. They're gonna get your child taken away from you. And I'm trying to help you here. I'm not here to save you. You gotta save yourself. You gotta go read this information because they're not gonna read this out loud to you. You got it. These people trying to sell you these packages, tell them to show you some law. And I ain't talking about this municipal laws of the United States. Tell them to show you international law. Tell them to show you the laws of their state. Tell them to show you their constitution. Tell them to show you their flag, their seal. Any laws that they've enacted through their executive branch and legislative branch. Ask them where their judicial branch. Ask them to show you some identification to say who they are of the state that the state recognized them. They can't answer none of these questions. This is shameful. I'm tired of seeing my sisters get ran over by these other sisters that you're trusting. This is gonna stop. We're talking sovereignty because someone said sovereignty means soul, S-O-U-L. The foolishness. So sovereignty means the power to do everything in a state without accountability to make laws, to execute and to apply them. To impose and collect taxes. Let me pause right there. To impose and collect taxes, right? Who can impose and collect taxes? Only the state. But the state needed what? A constitution. You see what's happened to my sisters and my brothers? Their empire Morocco was rising back up with a constitution. And we're gonna reinstate the government so that we can do what? Impose taxes and collect taxes because our treaties already guaranteed the fact the United States of America owes the Empire Morocco taxes, but we needed sovereignty. Listen to me, my sisters. Listen to me, my brothers. All the way for us to impose and collect taxes, we needed a state because the state is sovereign. The United States of America owes taxes to who? The sovereign. Okay, well, who's the sovereign? It's the state. What's the name of the state? Empire Morocco. Okay, Mr. State, where's your constitution? Oh, okay, here's the constitution right here. The United States of America is right here. Now, your taxes. It says, oh, well, where's your government? Oh, we, we set that up too. We got that. That's coming up real soon after June 8th, 2024. All these three branches of government will be reinstated. The constitution of Empire Morocco will be ratified, deposited, and promulgated in accordance to international law. The United States of America will receive notification and they can start getting ready to pay their taxation as agreed in the treaties. Because treaties are pretty lawful, man. Listen, I'm talking to my sisters right now who are about to lose their children because they're being conned. Alright, so when you're talking sovereignty, because you wanna sign a birth certificate. So who can sign the birth certificate? Only the officials of the state. The officials of the state turn around and issue these birth certificates. To wherever the competent authority is gonna hand it out to you. So you need the state, then the state government establishes a state form called a birth certificate and this, and the state birth, birth certificate is then handed to the mother. And this is what we're setting up through the constitution of the Empire Morocco so we can help these sisters who trying to make sure the United States of America is not making claims to their children. We're gonna help, but the way you're doing it right now, shortcuts, you're gonna find yourself losing your children. I'm trying to warn you. I'm gonna say this over and over again. Alright, so it's about this, sovereignty is about the state, the state imposing and collecting taxes and the levy contributions. To make war or peace, to form treaties. Listen to me. I just heard somebody on the Dr. G show talking about treaties, talking about they signed a treaty or wrote a treaty. Only states can write treaties. Only states can sign treaties with other states. Just because these arrogant, crazy people keep talking about, oh, I got a treaty. No, you don't. It's all a facade, it's BS. And I can challenge anyone of, bring your legal argument, bring your dang old treaty to the table and watch how easy I dismantle your so-called legal argument. I will destroy it so fast. You're not a state. Only states are the competent authority to enact treaties because then a treaty has to be done, what? What do you do with a treaty? A treaty has to be done. What's next once you have a treaty written? You gotta do what? You gotta pass it as legislation. It's gotta pass through the legislative branch. The legislative branch has to read the treaty and accept the treaty and approve the treaty through ratification. It gotta vote on it. Then it's gotta be handed over to who? The executive branch, which is the head of state or the prime minister, the head of government has to fully ratify it. Then it becomes law. But that treaty is either a bilateral treaty or a multilateral treaty with two or more states. That's called a treaty. Now, I'm hearing these idiots talking about they got some treaty. This, this foolishness has to stop. We have been miseducated so bad. And the students don't know no better. They looking at these people that look like them and saying, oh, I hope they telling me the truth. You know why they in the hoax status? You know why the students are in the hoax status? Because you ain't gonna teach them how to go read anything regarding law. So you got the students in a followership and worship status because you ain't teaching them nothing about law. The well-settled principles of law, substantive law, and procedural law. There's gonna be some class action lawsuits. If I have anything to do with, let me say this for the record. The future is very bright when it comes to lawsuits. It's, it's coming. I'm gonna do my best to teach all these people that's been injured by these con artists on how to put together a class action lawsuit against all these package selling people who are conning you. Don't worry about it, black America. Don't worry about the Moorish American students. I'm talking to Moorish American students. I'm talking to black America. If you've been injured by these, these package selling con artists. I will work with the, all the groups so they can put together a class action lawsuit because I know y'all been going to jail. I know you're losing your children. You're losing your house. You're losing your car. You're losing your freedom. The time is going to come. I'm sick and tired of this. Alright. Let's, let's read this next section.
Sovereignty in government is that public authority which directs or orders what is to be done by each member associated in relation to the end of the association. It is the supreme power by which any citizen is governed and is the person or body of persons in the state to whom there is political, politically no superior. The necessary existence of the state and that right and power which necessarily follow is sovereignty.
Pause. So right here, sovereignty. Sovereignty in government is that public authority which directs or orders what is to be done by each member associated in relation to the end of the association. It is the supreme power by which any citizen is governed. I'll say it again. Sovereignty is, is the supreme power by which any citizen is governed. Who governs the citizen? The state and the government. Two supreme powers that handle the state and the state turn around and does what? Extends powers to the government. Then the government governs over the people in an organized dual society. Okay, from here, I'm gonna read it again. It is the supreme power which any citizen is governed and is the person or body of persons in the state to whom there is politically no superior. Therefore, there's no superior over the state. Everybody is subordinate to the state. The head of state is subordinate to the state. The government is subordinate to the state. The people are subordinate to the state because the state is the sovereign. The sovereign is the state has jurisdiction over everybody and everything in it. But what's being taught is this foolishness talking about the state is you. So you turn around and tell everybody in the world that you, you, you got a, a sovereign soul. Your sovereignty is your soul. So you the state, the government, and the citizen, the people, all rolled up in one. The foolishness. And to turn around and say, nobody else's laws are applicable to you as if there's no superior over you as a human being. Let, let me, let me tell, let me tell you people something. I'm talking to black people. I'm talking to Moorish Americans. And anybody think they're a fake Indian. The state is superior over all human beings on planet Earth. There's not one human being on planet Earth that is more superior than the state. There's not one human being, not one. Everybody is subordinate to the state itself. The state constitution has superiority over all human beings. Ain't no such thing as one person having been superior all by themselves. It don't work like that. The foolishness. The reason why is because people aren't studying. They go to people and they say, oh, uh, can I buy a package that fixes all my problems? They say, absolutely. Give me some money. Give me some notes. Give me donations. Here's my Patreon. They hand you some fictitious paperwork. You run all thing and you fix all your problems. All thing you did is do what? You went from the pan right into the fire. Your problem went from bad to worse. That's what's gonna happen. And all the people go from the pan to the fire. You go from being a black man to be a Moorish American. You go from black to the higher status politically than Moorish American. Black man is here, Moorish American down here, because ain't no such thing as Moorish American as a state. You didn't go from being a black man of the United States of America over to another state to become a Moorish American of a Moorish America state. They're not equivalent. You, you went from a black man, which is really American, into some fictitious status of being Moorish American down here because there's no protections down here. You ain't, where's the Moorish American laws? There's no, no laws for Moorish Americans? Unless you talking about going to your church, you got your church bylaws, but you got a lot of Moors running around talking about they civic Moors and they all, they standing on their square by themselves. Sovereign citizen. Because you saying you're the state, the government, and the people all rolled up in one and you saying you're superior. States are superior. So when people say I'm superior because I'm divine. No, you're just a fool because you've been miseducated. That's the truth. I love my people. I'm gonna tell you the truth. The truth hurts. It's tough love because I love y'all. And I'm tired of seeing y'all get hurt by these con- And I'm tired of seeing y'all get hurt by these con artists. And I know I'm just not starting to teach this class the last couple of years and these con artists got a 100 year head start on me. I only been teaching these classes for three years. It'd be three years in July. And the con artist got a hundred year head start on me. So I'm playing catch up, but I'm trying to catch up fast. I think I'm actually caught up. And I'd have lapped these damn con artists, cause I'm gonna turn around and lock all of them up. When we talk about the empire Morocco, let me pull it up, cause I'm upset. I'm mad. I'm tired of the foolishness hurting our people. When this constitution is in full force of effect. The consul generals, which are the attorneys of the state. When the legislative branch enacts laws. We pull up. When the legislative branch enacts laws regarding propaganda, et cetera, against Moorish Americans. Right? Moorish Americans are Moorish subjects. The, and the executive branch signs those laws into effect. Within the executive branch, you're gonna have judicial officers such as, you're gonna have police, sheriffs. We have our own law enforcement branches underneath the empire Morocco. And when they bring an indictment to someone and they bring them over here to the judicial branch, where more than likely I will be sitting. There, and if you found guilty of breaking Moroccan law, cause you out here with this propaganda that's causing injuries to other Moorish subjects, cause everybody think they're black, negro, colored Moorish Americans. They're all Moorish subjects according to treaties. The United States knows that the empire Morocco has jurisdiction over Moorish subjects according to article 102 of the Act of Al-Ghaziris. This propaganda is gonna stop, cause the United States loves it. The United States loves it when you say you're Moorish American and the United States loves it when you say you Indian. Cause they still got jurisdiction over you. But they know when empire Morocco comes back, empire Morocco got jurisdiction over Moorish subjects. This is gonna stop. It's gonna stop injuring our carbonated peoples. It's gotta stop. I'm sick of it. Okay, this last sentence. Okay, right here.
Uh, the necessary existence of the state and that right and power which necessarily follow is sovereignty. By sovereignty in its largest sense is meant supreme, absolute, uncontrollable power, the absolute right to govern. The word which by itself comes nearest to being the definition of sovereignty is will or violation as applied to political affairs.
Alright, so sovereignty about supreme is absolute. It's uncontrollable power. The absolute right to govern. The word which by itself comes nearest to being the definition of sovereignty is will or violation as applied to political affairs. So sovereignty is what? What is sovereignty? Sovereignty is what? Sovereignty is will. What's the will? What's the will? You learning about this. What is the will? It's the constitution. That's sovereignty. Sovereignty is the will. The will is the constitution. Let's go back to its definition. Blackwell dictionary, fourth edition. Sovereignty. Definition of sovereignty is will. Definition of sovereignty is will. And what's the will? The constitution? Constitution does what? It reinstates the state. And that's sovereignty. And this is what people aren't being taught. So the empire Morocco is trying to bring back sovereignty. So we can help the people. Right? Okay, listen. Li- listen. I'm talking to you, black America. I'm talking to the Moorish Americans too, and anybody think they're Indian. This is a document from 1906. I gotta talk about this because we're talking sovereignty. But in the absence of sovereignty for yourself, which is your state governing you and protecting you. That means you become naturalized, right? So in the absence, you have a sovereign state under the protection of your own state, you automatically become adopted by another state. So in 1906, the United States started talking about the Moors. What is their status? What, what, what should we consider them? Cause in 1906, the European states agreed to let the Moors start to govern the affairs of the empire Morocco again. But they knew the Moors were naturalized. So they were like, "Well, who gonna wake them up?" The United States is like, "We ain't doing it. The obligation is on France and the obligation is on the Moors to wake up by themselves." So let me show you a document in 1906. All the Moors are familiar with it. To show you that all it was talking about here was citizenship and naturalization. So in class 143, we would learn about naturalization means adoption. So keep that in mind. So now we're gonna learn that Hoffman Phillips in 1906 was talking about naturalization. So he was talking about the adoption status of the Moors. But what type of Moors at the time? They were Moor subjects. If so, Jew are Moor subjects. We're gonna learn about that. So I'm gonna show you this document because we're talking sovereignty, but now we gotta talk about, okay, what was the problem? The Moors that became what? Colonized, right? That they were colonization, right? And naturalization. Well, what's the opposite of colonization and naturalization is what? Decolonization. And this is what we gotta do in order to decolonize. What's one of the first things that we need? What is the first, one of the first thing we needed? We needed what? A constitution to set up the will. So now we're gonna read a 1906 document to show the Moors exactly what the United States was trying to say. We go back and interpret it a little bit better now. Okay, no go from the top.
Morocco. Mr. Phillips charged the affairs to Mr. Root, Secretary of State of August 3rd of 1906. Uh, with an American legation in Tangier on August 3rd of 1906.
Pause. So this Mr. uh, Hoffman Phillips was standing in Tangier. Well, where's Tangier? Morocco, empire Morocco. At the time, it was over in Africa where was the district, right? The district on behalf of the empire Morocco was located in FES. Right? In FES, right? F-E-S. In English is F-E-Z. So Tangier was being occupied by Spain at the time, but was really in the empire Morocco. So Hoffman Phillips is over there in Tangier in August 3rd, 1906. And he's writing correspondence, okay? So he's talking to who? Mr. Root, Secretary of State of the United States, okay? Alright, from here.
Okay, sir. There are, strictly speaking, no Moroccan laws.
Pause. Let me tell the Moors something real quick. Okay, Moors, you see these asterisks? This asterisk, right? All this asterisk right here, please keep in mind, when you see this in the document, that means that the United States has redacted information. Everywhere you see asterisks all throughout the 1906 expatuation document, it means the United States removed all the language from the document. So if you see like, uh, three asterisks, one, two, three, that means they're gonna remove like a sentence. If you see a whole row of asterisks, that means they removed a whole paragraph or paragraphs. So that must be understood. As soon as it says, "Sir," you see the asterisk, that mean they removed all that information. Then you start reading here, "There are." So remember that, Moors. It plays a lot of content missing from this document. Okay, no go from the top. Sir.
Sir, there are, strictly speaking, no Moroccan laws relating to citizenship of Moorish subjects in Morocco. The fundamental laws of this non-Christian country are based entirely upon the Islamic code. No part of which treats of the subject of citizenship.
So right off the top, we're learning. As we go back and do different interpretations, we've been learning now about international law. We've been finally studying the treaties of the Treaty of Padre of 1880 and reading the Treaty of 1906. And we read the Treaty of FES of 1912. And we studied the, the French versus United States of America, right? ICJ case of 1952. Now we can come back and read this and it reads differently now. We understand the context and the concept, right? So right here in the first paragraph, what they saying? There are strictly speaking, no Moroccan laws relating to citizenship of Moorish subjects in Morocco. So immediately you gotta understand, what's the mindset? What is Hoffman Phillips talking about? He's talking about citizenship. Citizenship, right, of Moorish subjects in Morocco. So we must immediately start understanding this conversation about the Moors citizenship status. Immediately, that should be the concept. This is talking about your status as a citizen. Are you a Moroccan or you still American? This is what Hoffman Phillips is really talking about. Are these Moors still gonna be considered Moroccans? Are these Moors gonna be considered Americans? Cause they're talking citizenship and citizenship is what? That's a political status. And we found out in the naturalization, the Moors been adopted as Americans. They were never Americans. They were Moroccans who've been adopted by an American family. Alright? So from the top, "There are, strictly speaking, no Moroccan laws relating to citizenship of Moorish subjects in Morocco." "The fundamental laws of this non-Christian country are based entirely upon the Islamic code. No part of which treats of the subject of citizenship." So what's the subject that Hoffman Phillips is talking about? He talking about citizenship. Now keep in mind, the Moors been reading this document for decades. And they ain't not understanding they're talking about your citizenship status. Right? Now listen to what they say next. Okay. From the top.
There are, however, numerous treaties and conventions between the various Christian countries and the Moorish empire, by means of which citizenship in this country is defined.
Pause. Read it again.
There are, however, numerous treaties and conventions between the various Christian countries and the Moorish empire, by means of which citizenship in this country is defined.
Alright, so he's opening up, still talking about citizenship and he started now talking about your Moorish treaties. This same thing Barack Obama was trying to tell you about your status. Go back and look at the founding fathers, cause the founding fathers are assessed to your Moorish treaties. And then your Moorish treaties will tell you what your political status is. A, that you're Moroccan, but you've been adopted as Americans. So this is about citizenship. From the top again, let's, let's, let's read it.
There are, however, numerous treaties and conventions between the various Christian countries and the Moorish empire, by means of which citizenship in this country is defined. But as I understand from the above acknowledged instructions, that is, that it is not the desire of the department to call for a report upon with such lines. I will therefore confine these remarks to general conditions existing which may possibly be of some use in connections with the information desired. One, citizenship in Morocco may be said to be governed by the laws pertaining to the same in other countries. With the exception that all persons residing in Morocco who cannot prove foreign citizenship or protection are considered, if so, Jew as Moorish subjects.
Alright, pause. So section one is talking about what? Citizenship in Morocco may be said to be governed by the laws pertaining to the same in other countries. So they're talking other countries. Why? Because they're talking about what? The multilateral Moorish treaties. That the Sultan agreed and consented through treaties to allow all the European states to naturalize the Moors and give the Moors the citizen status wherever they was residing throughout the empire of Morocco. So the Moors over here in the West ended up becoming Indian, I mean, excuse me, ended up becoming Americans, right? So the Moors in the West ended up becoming Americans because we became naturalized, i.e. adopted. Alright? So section one, citizenship in Morocco may be said to be governed by the laws pertaining to the same in other countries. So all the countries had created laws, legislation that adopted the Moors under naturalization. With the exception that persons residing in Morocco who cannot prove foreign citizenship or protection are considered, if so, Jew as Moorish subjects. So if the Moors could not prove, if they could not prove basically protections, then they considered just basically Moorish subjects and Moorish subjects could be adopted and turned into a citizen of whatever territory they were in. So it's the obligation in power Morocco for all the Moors to be recognized by the empire Morocco. And if the Moors could not prove that their power Morocco recognize them as Moroccan nationals, the United States and other European states automatically say that you're just simply an if so Jewer Moor subject that now could be what? Naturalized and put on the protections of a foreign, a foreign country such as the United States of America. It's all about protections, Moors. We're gonna learn more about the word protection. Alright? We're gonna come back to that word. Section two and three. No.
Two and three. Moorish subjects lost their nationality only by becoming naturalized in or protected by another country having treaty relations with the Moorish empire.
Pause. So section two or three. Moorish subjects lost their nationality. Moorish subjects. Moorish subjects lost their nationality. What was their nationality first? Moroccan. Well, have they lose their nationality? Well, they lost because they were what? They were naturalized. They said the Moorish subjects lost their nationality only by becoming what? What did they become? Naturalized. So naturalization stripped the Moors of their nationality of being Moroccan. So anybody who was not being recognized by a state automatically was recognized as an if so Jewer Moor subject. And all if so Jewer Moor subjects got naturalized by the European states. And who agreed to that? The Sultan. The Sultan allowed all the Moors to be naturalized by the European states. So the Moors came under what? Protections. Listen, listen how it reads. I'm gonna read it again. Section two or three. No, again.
Section two and three. Moorish subjects lost their nationality only by becoming naturalized in or protected by another country having treaty relations with the Moorish empire.
Alright, so the Moors became in a status of being protected, you see? So once you're naturalized, what does naturalized mean? How would they define it? You gotta see what they're saying. Naturalization status means you've been put on a protection status, you see? So protection is another, so another country having treaty relations with the Moorish empire. So anybody who had treaty relations within, with the Moorish empire, i.e. the Moroccan empire, i.e. the empire Morocco, the Sultan agreed to let the Moors be naturalized, put on the protection status. Now, let me pause right there, cause I'm trying to make a point here. This letter is talking about citizenship. So if the Moors that became citizens under naturalization, you've been put on a protection status by the United States of America and other European states. So what is, what's happening here? So the United States is saying they're deriving their delegation of authority from the Moorish treaties. They're also talking about their acts, their legislative acts are naturalizing the Moors. So they're deriving their powers from a treaty and they're deriving their powers from legislation. But what set up their legislation? First they had to have what? A state and constitution in order to set up a legislative branch, cause the legislative branch enacts legislation. So they're talking about how they're deriving their powers to naturalize the Moors, to put the Moors on the protected status. So, so therefore, we, we as Moors have to turn around and protect our own people through our own constitution. The constitution provides protections. Okay, listen. I'm gonna type in the word, I'm gonna go, Ctrl+F, I'm typing the word protections, okay? Matter of fact, I'm gonna go to article, I'm gonna go to article 92 of the constitution of empire Morocco. Article 92. Look, look what the constitution is now doing for the Moors. Okay, no. Article 92, section three.
Three, all Moorish people have a peremptory right to come under the protection of His Majesty the Sultan of Morocco. of His Majesty the Sultan of Morocco and the Constitution of the Empire of Morocco if they so choose by the will of the people.
Read it again.
Three, all Moorish people have a peremptory right to come under the protection of His Majesty the Sultan of Morocco and the Constitution of the Empire of Morocco if they so choose by the will of the people.
So Article, so under Article ninety-two, okay? Article ninety-two and the Constitution of the Empire of Morocco, the Moorish government is trying to enact a constitution, give you a constitutional right. Cause the state and the constitution act as one, so it's state, government, then the people. So the state, right, is reinstated by a constitution. The constitution extends powers to the government. And now the government comes in and says, all Moorish people have a peremptory right to come under the protection of His Majesty the Sultan of Morocco and the Constitution of the Empire of Morocco if they so choose by the will of the people. So you come out, the Moors will come under the protection of both the Sultan, right? The Sultan and the Constitution of the Empire of Morocco. You see what we're doing? We're trying to help the people. We're trying to check the applicable boxes. We're trying to do it right. We're not telling, uh, people out here, oh, you can be a sovereign all by yourself. No, it's about the state, the constitution, the government, and the people. So I'm trying to show the Moors, the Empire of Morocco, the Moroccan nationals are trying to now enact a constitution that will reach back and grab Dorothy and help Dorothy to come home. This is what we're doing, is set up the constitution as a portal, as a portal for the Moors to be able to come back home to a government. Listen, that was Article ninety-two talking about protections. Let's go to Article ninety-eight. Okay, so Article ninety-eight, right, let's, let's read, what's the name of the chapter?
Chapter fifteen. Transitional provisions pertaining to trust territories and the right to self-determination of colonized Moorish peoples.
So Article ninety-eight, I'm going down to section five, okay? Section five. Okay, no, with section five.
Five, His Majesty the Sultan of Morocco shall be entitled to recognize an a-defined trust territory or non-self-governing territory as being under the protection of the Empire of Morocco per the will of the Moorish peoples and others concerned in that geographical territory.
Alright, so section five in the Article ninety-eight of the Constitutional Empire of Morocco is trying to help Moors. Right, it's trying to create a portal for you to come back and repatriate back to the state. And repatriate to pledge allegiance through the government. This is what we have to do, check the boxes, we have to do it right, Moors, we have to do it right. Article ninety-eight, section five. His Majesty the Sultan of Morocco shall be entitled to recognize a defined trust territory or non-self-governing territory as being under the protection of the Empire of Morocco per the will of the Moorish peoples or others concerned in that geographical territory. Alright, so let's go back to Hoffman Phillips then. Let's go back. So Hoffman Phillips, okay? Look what Hoffman Phillips says about protections. Alright, so right here, section one, read that again, no.
One, citizenship in Morocco may be said to be governed by the laws pertaining to the same in other countries. With the exception that all persons residing in Morocco who cannot prove foreign citizenship or protection are considered ipso jure as Moorish subjects.
So now, the Moors are made through the Constitution of Par Morocco. We've been approved, we've been approved protections. The Moors better come with protections under the Empire of Morocco state and the Empire of Morocco constitution, you see? We're setting up these reforms for the Moors to use the portal to come back home like Dorothy. Alright, so section two and three, I'm listening, we're talking protections.
Two and three. Moorish subjects lost their nationality only by becoming naturalized in or protected by another country having treaty relations with the Moorish Empire.
So the Moorish subjects lost their nationality only by becoming naturalized in or protected by another country having treaty relations with the Moorish Empire. So now we gotta fix that, we gotta say, okay, you don't need to provide protections for a country. You foreign countries don't need to provide protections for the Moors. Cause the Moors got a right to come under protections of what? Of our own constitution, right? Such as Article ninety-eight, section five says, His Majesty the Sultan of Morocco shall be entitled to recognize defined trust territory or non-self-governing territory as being under the protection of the Empire of Morocco per the will of the Moorish peoples or others concerned in that geographical territory. You see that? So we had to do. We had to do it right. Moors wasn't reading the instructions. Too easy doing cash out and writing books. And now the Moorish Americans have created Rod Hayes. The Moorish Americans created Red Bird because the Moorish Americans were derelict in their duties to go and read the instructions so they can help uplift foreign humanity. Alright, so if the constitution provides protections, what, what, what happens now? Okay, if the constitution provides protections, guess what Hoffman Phillips said? These Moors had to do if in fact the empire could provide protection. So Hoffman Phillips turns around and says what? Right here, no.
It was established by the Convention of Madrid concluded on July third of eighteen eighty as follows.
What was established? Naturalization. Naturalization and protections established, right? What was established? Naturalization and protections that stripped, stripped the Moors of their national, nationality. And then he turns around and says, okay, what gave us our delegation of authority to strip these Moors of their Moroccan nationality? Okay, then Hoffman Phillips breaks it down. He says, uh, well, we got our delegation of authority orders from, uh, right here, no.
It was established by the Convention of Madrid concluded on July third of eighteen eighty as follows in Article fifteen. Any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized in a foreign country and who shall return to Morocco shall after having remained for a length of time equal to that which shall have been regularly necessary for him to obtain such naturalization, choose between the entire submission to the laws of the empire and the obligation to quit Morocco unless it shall be proven that his naturalization in a foreign country was obtained with the consent of the government of Morocco.
So Hoffman Phillips in nineteen oh six turns around and say, uh, we got our delegation of authority from the Sultan, cause the Sultan signed this Madrid Convention Treaty that allowed us to naturalize, naturalize the Moors and strip them of their Moroccan nationality. And it says right here, any subject of Morocco, cause Hoffman Phillips just said, just said here, ipso jure Moorish subjects lost their nationality. So it says right here, any subject of Morocco, any ipso jure Moorish subject who has been naturalized in a foreign country, United States of America, and who shall return to Morocco. So what happened? Anybody who's been naturalized has to what? Return to Morocco, this is the instruction the United States throws. If you want to do what? Restate your nationality, if you wanna repatriate back to the state, then you gotta return to Morocco. Keep in mind, Morocco means what? Empire. It means empire, not kingdom of Morocco. It says, okay, let me, right here. Right here, Moorish empire, not kingdom of Morocco. That returned to the empire. Right? So how many times, right, is the word naturalized been? So the Moors have to return to Morocco, cause they were naturalized and they have to do what next? Choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire. So what's the laws of the empire? Okay, let me show it to you. Let me show it to you. Bam, there it is, it's the constitution of the Empire of Morocco. That's the law. That's the law, this is all we have to do, Moors, is enact the day-known constitution to set up the primary superior law, constitution. That's all we have to do. That's all we had to do. So according to Article fifteen of Treaty Madrid, we have to choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire. What about the laws of the empire? Constitution. That was the main law. That set up what? A government, the government of Morocco towards the state, which is the Empire of Morocco and its government of Morocco. That's all we had to do. That's all we had to do. Return to the state, which is the empire with its constitution, and reestablish the government of Morocco. Because all the Moors lost their nationality because they was what? What did Hoffman Phillips tell you? You lost your nationality because you was what? Naturalized. How many times word naturalized is mentioned in Article fifteen Treaty Madrid? One, two, three, four, four times. And what are they? This was the problem of the Moors. This is why you never see the grand sheiks reading Article fifteen out loud. They, go watch the grand sheiks, watch them. Every time they read the expectation document, they'll never read past section two and three. They'll read section one, section two and three, and they go, er, they'll stop right there. They'll never say anything about the Treaty of Madrid, they'll stop. I, I challenge anybody, go back and listen to any grand sheik, read this document, and they'll always stop at section one, two, and three. They won't even mention Treaty Madrid, and they won't even read Article fifteen. Go back, go back and listen to any grand sheiks. I, I challenge anybody to find a grand sheik reading Article fifteen out loud. I challenge you. You won't find it. They've always known the answer, the Moors are what? Naturalized, 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 naturalized. And they always know the Moors need to do what? Return to Morocco and choose between entire submission of the laws of the empire and the empire's government. That would be the answer to the test. They wasn't allowed to tell you the test. This is the problem. And now they pushing this Indian thing. They, now, look what's happening right now. Let, let me go a little off-script, uh, Indian. The Moorish Americans have built a YouTube channel called House of Reawakening Minds. Ninety or ninety-five percent of the subscribers on the House of Reawakening Minds, I'm talking to subscribers, I feel sorry for the subscribers. The House of Reawakening Minds was a one YouTube channel. They knew they could go to, to learn things about being a Moorish American. Now the host of the House of Reawakening Minds is snapping on the subscribers that helped her to build the channel. You got subscribers been watching that channel for over a decade and supporting that channel, and the host is telling those very subscribers to kick rocks. Why is that? Because the host is bringing on Indians onto a Moorish American channel. This is shameful. This is shameful. Ninety-five percent of those subscribers, thirty-six thousand subscribers on the House of Reawakening Minds, at least thirty thousand are Moorish Americans, and the host is telling the very subscribers to kick rocks if you don't like the fact Indians are on a Moorish American channel. That goes to show you Moorish Americans, there's no loyalty, there's no unity. When the host is telling you, after you've been watching House of Reawakening Minds for over ten years, telling you to kick rocks if you don't like, who the, the, the guest is on the show. They, if, if, if you don't like the guest, then you, you better not say nothing to the host. The host is threatening people. Don't comment to my, and, and, and my comments talking about my guest, wait a minute. This is so disrespectful. That is a Moorish American channel. I'm talking to the host. How dare you turn around and tell the very subscribers who helped you build that channel to tell them to kick rocks if they don't like your guest you got on there when you know they upset that you're bringing these fictitious Indians on there? Shameful. There's no unity, and I already said it out loud, there's no honor of monks. Look what Hoffman Phillips said. Now, I'm on one today, I'm just letting the Moors know I'm on one, cause I'm tired of seeing our people get railroaded by these con artists. It's gonna be a day of reckoning. Okay. So the last paragraph of Article fifteen, I'm sorry, Moors, I, I know y'all been through this a thousand times, but we gotta talk about it, cause we're talking Sarats. How are we gonna collect taxes if we don't even understand the basics of Sarats? Saratsy means what? The state. And the state needed what? According to Black Law Dictionary and the definition of Saratsy, the state needed a constitution and it needed administration. It gave all the Moors the answer to the test. You know how many times Moors have read the definition of Saratsy in the Black Law Dictionary? And they skipped over all those words? They skipped over state, they, they skipped over administration, they skipped over constitution? This is shameful. I don't get it. Look what Hoffman Phillips says about Article fifteen, last paragraph, okay, no.
Foreign naturalization heretofore acquired by subjects of Morocco according to the rules established by the laws of each country shall be continued to them as regards all its effects without any restrictions.
So the Moorish Americans, grand sheiks know that the Moors, if they remain naturalized, the United States of America can maintain its civil and criminal jurisdiction over anybody calling themselves American. Naturalization is Americanization. Naturalization is Americanization. So the second paragraph was foreign naturalization, heretofore. So heretofore means after the date of July third eighteen eighty, acquired by subjects of Morocco, so the ipso jure Moorish subjects acquired naturalization, they were naturalized, meaning adopted, right, so acquired by subjects of Morocco according to the rules established by the laws of each country like the United States of America shall be continued to them. Continued to who? United States of America as regards all its effects without any restrictions to United States of America's laws. United States of America's laws. United States of America's laws could continue without any restrictions. United States of America's laws could continue without any restrictions against any Moors who were still naturalized because the Moors had failed to follow the simple instructions. And what was the simple instructions? It said, if you're a Moor, i.e. subject of Morocco, and you've been naturalized by the United States of America, you're supposed to return to Morocco and choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire, i.e. submit to the government of Morocco. That was the answer? So now we're starting to fulfill the obligations of this article, right? Okay, listen. Wha- what's the Moors' problem? Li- listen, Moors, I'm trying to help the Moors, and I'm definitely trying to help the sisters, because the sisters are just, y'all catching hell. Sisters catching hell. Cause the sisters are believing other sisters. And these other sisters are, are selling y'all all kind of crap. But, but I'm a law man, I'm a law man, I'm gonna teach the sisters the truth. I love the sisters, I, my, I love my mother. Since I love my mother, I love the sisters. And I'm tired of seeing my sisters get railroaded. I'm trying, I'm tired of seeing my brothers get railroaded by these con artists. So let, let's talk. Here's what the Moorish Americans and black people don't understand. From the top, no.
The United States and the several Union Chartered States have five lawful rights to keep the Moors under their civil and criminal jurisdiction in Morocco.
Pause, so, so, the United States and the several Union Chartered States have five lawful rights to keep the Moors under their civil and criminal jurisdiction in Morocco. Now, you can replace the word Moor with the word Indian if you want to. I'm gonna read, I'll do it for you. The United States and the several Union Chartered States have five lawful rights to keep the fake Moor, fake Indians, I should say, fake Indians under their civil and criminal jurisdiction in Morocco. So whether you choose Moor or you choose Indian, what I'm about to say is applicable to you. I'm trying to help. I'm simply just trying to help. Watch this. What are the five lawful rights that, that Moorish Americans never knew nothing about? Okay.
One, a treaty right. Two, constitutional right. Three, legislative right. Four, Charter of the United Nations right. And five, the ICJ ruling of nineteen fifty-two right.
Okay. So from the top, what are the five? So from the top, what did I say? I said, "The United States," okay? Keep in mind, this is an AIPAC study session, right? It's an educational platform that's learned together, we're all in this together, we're all family. I love all the Moors. Listen. The United States and the several Union Chartered States have five lawful rights to keep the Moors under their civil and criminal jurisdiction in Morocco. Why am I talking about this? Because we're trying to establish the empire Morocco that gives the Moors a right to return to empire Morocco. But you'll never return to empire, empire Morocco because you think you got your, you think you covered. You, you think you Moors American, you got your packages, you think you good. You think you done went on to Rare Bird and Rob Mariah Bay and got some fictitious pack, uh, packages and you think you good. And you don't realize the United States of America's got rights over you nonetheless. And I'm gonna prove it. Look, I've already been over this stuff, this is a recap. The United States and the several Union Chartered States have five lawful rights to keep the Moors under their civil and criminal jurisdiction in Morocco. What are the five? Well, the United States has what? They have treaty rights. The United States has a constitutional right to keep the Moors under civil and criminal jurisdiction. The United States and several Union States have legislative right and they have a Charter of the United Nations right and they have an ICJ ruling of 1952. Right? Well, okay, let's break it down. Number one, what do I mean they got a treaty right? The treaties. The Treaty of Madrid of 1880. Article 15 gave, gave the United States of America the treaty right to naturalize the Moors, to make the Moors citizens of the United States. So the United States has what? Treaty right. To put the Moors under civil and criminal jurisdiction of the United States of America and of the United States and of the several Union States. Number two, the United States has a constitutional right. What do I mean? In both, in both what? The United States of America's Constitution of 1789 and of the Constitution of the United States of 1871. Both of those constitutions have constitutional rights. Why do I say that? Because the United States of America right went back and they did an amendment to their constitution and added what? The 13th, 14th and 15th amendment to their constitution. Which gave them a constitutional right to naturalize the Moors, especially the 14th amendment. Naturalize the Moors. So they got a treaty right through the Treaty of Madrid. They got a constitutional right from the 13th, 14th and 15th amendment. Then they try to run and gave themselves a legislative right such as what legislative act? What's the act? What's the most popular act the Moors know about? It's called what? The Act of Congress of 1870 that naturalized the Moors. So they have a legislative right, right? Legislative right, they had legislative power to naturalize the Moors. They had constitutional powers to naturalize the Moors. And they have treaty powers to naturalize the Moors. Then they turn around, when the Charter came out in 1945, Article 73 of the Charter of the United Nations recognized the member states who had assumed, that's the key word, assumed responsibility over, uh, over colonized people. Have to maintain certain obligations over the trust territories. So Article 73 of the Charter of the United Nations recognized an administrative authority was overseeing the sacred trust. So even the Charter of the United Nations recognizes the right for the colonial power to maintain protections over those territories. So the United States of America have a Charter, Charter of the United Nations right to continue to be the administration as long as the Moors continue to acquiesce and not establish their own governments. You see? The number five. The International Court of Justice had a ruling in 1952 called France versus United States of America. And within that case, what did the ICJ say about the Moors and the empire Morocco? It said, "The empire Morocco had done what?" Acquiesced. It said, "By consent and acquiescence." And look, what's the consent part? That the Sultan had agreed to let the Moors be naturalized. What's the acquiescence part? That the Moors have yet to follow the instructions of Treaty of Madrid, Article 15, to return to Morocco and choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire and the empire's government. The Moors hadn't done it by 1952. So then, so the ICJ gave the United States a limited jurisdiction over the Moors as long as the Moors continue to acquiesce to continue to call themselves what? The true Americans. As long as the Moors keep saying they're Americans, then the ICJ has already ruled on behalf of the United States of America to keep the Moors naturalized. So the United States of America, the United States and the several Union States have five rights. Lawful rights under treaties, their constitution of their amendments. They got legislative powers, charter powers, and they got a ruling from the ICJ. And the Moors never knew none of this. They understood just a little bit. But they didn't understand all of that. Okay, so what would, do we need to do in opposite? That's the problem. Okay, what's the solution? Guess what we gotta do? We gotta flip. We gotta flip this now. Guess what? The Moors they got a right to have treaty rights. The Moors got a right to enact constitutions, to have a constitution right. The Moors got a right to enact legislation. The Moors got a right to utilize the Charter under Article 73 and self-government. The Moors got a right to invoke the ICJ ruling of 1952 to say, "We ain't acquiescing no more." And then we gonna invoke the power of constable court. Cause the ICJ also told the United States of America in the same case that all the Moors gotta do is enforce their treaty, their Moroccan laws, their Moroccan regulations through the competent constable court. And everything will be fine, you see? All the United States of America. So we gotta flip this. So, okay, so from the top. Okay, number, what's it saying?
The United States and the several Union Chartered States have five lawful rights to keep the Moors under their civil and criminal jurisdiction in Morocco. One is a treaty right. Two is a constitutional right. Three is a legislative right. Four is a Charter of the United Nations right. And five is the ICJ ruling of 1952 right.
These are all rights, substantive rights. So what do we need to do as Moors? We gotta flip it. Right? We gotta, we gotta play that reverse card, that the reverse Uno, right? We gotta reverse it. Okay, listen. Watch this. Watch this. Now we gonna change the language, you see what I did? Watch. Okay, you see it, Moors? You see what I did? Uh, here was about the United States, five lawful rights. Okay. Then I flipped it, you see? I flipped it. I flipped it. Okay? I flipped it to now talk about the empire has rights. We gonna flip it now, cause we gonna get back in proper status, proper political status. Now look how it reads. Okay, no.
The empire of Morocco and the several internal Moors states have five lawful rights to keep the United States of America, its organs and its citizens under civil and criminal jurisdiction in Morocco to this end by?
Read it again.
The empire of Morocco and the several internal Moors states have five lawful rights to keep the United States of America, its organs and its citizens under civil and criminal jurisdiction in Morocco to this end by?
Okay, so now I'm gonna read. Cause we gonna flip it on them. The empire of Morocco and the several internal Moors states have five lawful rights to keep the United States of America, its organs and its citizens under civil and criminal jurisdiction in Morocco to this end by? You see, so I flipped it? So the United States been in superior position, now the empire Morocco in superior position. Right? Listen, so now we got five rights. What are our five rights? Okay, no.
One is a treaty right. Two is a constitutional right. Three is a legislative right. Four is a Charter of the United Nations right. And five is the ICJ ruling of 1952 right.
Alright, so now we can flip it on them. Because we can do now what? What can we do now? How is it that we can now enforce our treaty rights? Well, you gotta understand, first you needed what? A constitution. A constitution sets up what? The state. Only states can be parties to a treaty. The constitution sets up the state, the state becomes a sovereign and sovereigns can sign treaties. So once we established the constitution for the empire Morocco, now we become signatory powers to all of our Moors treaties. So now we have a treaty right, we have a constitution right, empire Morocco, and then what do we need to do next? We need legislation. The empire Morocco needs legislation to pass through its three branches of government, listen to the Moors. So we need legislation, right? Executive branch, the legislative branch has to come together and enact legislation such as the same way the United States enacted what? In 1870, it came up what? Naturalization Act, right? It naturalized the Moors. Now the Moors have to repatriate back to the state, cause they were naturalized. Now they gotta repatriate back to the state. Well, how do they do that? Well, first we need a constitution so they can return to the state and the state government. But the government also needed what? Needed legislation, that's why it's a legislative branch. So we need a legislation, listen. Listen. What, what do I have up here? This is one of the bills, one of the legislative acts of AIPAC, right? So AIPAC, our, our house, right of our government, passed a law, right? A bill that turned into law, it's a legislative act. Called the Former Moors Subject Act. What does that mean? All the Moors are now former, if they return to the empire Morocco, they're former Moors subjects that are now what? Moroccan nationals. But the state have to enact what? Legislation that set forth a constitutional right as well as a legislative right. You need a constitutional right as well as a legislative right in order for the Moors to be able to return back to Morocco to enforce the treaty right. Okay, so we gonna read a little bit of this, okay? What, what is this about? Okay. Even though this belongs to AIPAC, the empire Morocco's government, the empire Morocco's government will then enact something very similar that will be known as the Former Moors Subject Act. That will be passed through the legislative branch, over to the executive branch, and then the Sultan will sign it into law and be fully ratified. You see? And what we have, it have language, right? It'll be a legislative act. Okay? Let's read some of it. Okay. From the top, no.
Former Moors Subject Act. Whereas the right of protection for naturalized Moors subjects in the empire of Morocco was substantively secured in the multilateral Madrid Convention of July of 18, July 3rd, 1880, Article 15, Paragraph 1. In correlation with the periphery norms of international law, just cogits, wherefore Article 15, Paragraph 1 of the Madrid Convention entitles any naturalized subject of Morocco an ergo summa's rights to renounce their citizenship of the United States by application and pledge their consent to a Moroccan state government without the assent of the foreign United States of America and its representative intergovernmental organization of the United States. Therefore, be it enacted by the House of the Dalilazis assembled, that the bill known as Title 18, Section 148 shall be cited as the Former Moors Subject Act as follows.
So this Former Moors Subject Act is legislation. So we needed legislation. Right? So first you have a constitutional right, remember earlier we read the constitution that said the Sultan recognized the right of the Moors people to return home. That's a constitutional right. And the Sultan, in the constitution of the empire Morocco, it was invoking the treaty right. So the constitution and the treaty rights were being enforced through the empire Morocco's constitution. Then the third thing we needed is what? Legislation. Right? We need legislation, cause we gonna read some more of this, but give me a second here. So we needed a treaty right. So the empire Morocco's constitution even talks about the treaty. But the treaty, we use the Treaty of Madrid, Article 15, Paragraph 1. Then in the constitution itself, right? We read over Article 92 and Article 98 that talked about our constitutional right. Now we're reading a legislative right called the Former Moors Subject Act. Okay, was an act of what? Congress, i.e. an act of the government. Okay, listen. Alright, so now that we read the preamble, we come down, okay? Just gonna read a little bit of this, so I can get the Moors to understanding what we're talking about, okay? Alright, so watch this. Okay, Section 3, we gonna read about maybe five sections and we gonna skip down. Okay? Section 3.
Section 3, right of protection by a Moors state government in the empire of Morocco. A, the human right for any Moor to come under the protection of a modern Moors state constitution and its government is inviolable. B, the human right of a Moor to denounce or renounce the naturalized citizenship of the foreign United States shall be observed as substantive law without interruption. C, the Moroccan state government shall have the right to assist any subject of Morocco that seeks to choose the entire submissions of the constitution and laws of the state. Three, the due process of Moroccan nationalism shall not be interrupted by any colonial power having treaty relations with the empire of Morocco. And E, the United States of America, the United States international intergovernmental organization, its several Union Chartered States and its organs, agents, natural or juridical persons shall be prohibited from any attempt to supervise the impossibility of performance of "a subject" in quotes, and his or her written petition to a Moroccan state for the fulfillment of consent to the Moors state government by application and acceptance.
Pause, okay. So I just wanted to get the Moors, this is called legislation. Okay, this is legislation for what? What's the title of Section 3 of this particular, particular legislative act? Right, of protection by a Moors state government in the empire Morocco, we needed to enact legislation. Okay, so we read from Sections A all through E, but there were other, there were other subsections all the way down to I, but we only gonna read a few of them, okay? Alright, so now, uh, let's read this one. Section 4. I'm giving the Moors a snapshot, this is how powerful we can be as Moors and we come together and unite. We need to have, we need to unite. We need to have some loyalty and unite with one another. Gotta follow the instructions, this is the problem with our people. All we care about is selling tickets and selling packages instead of uniting. This is gonna force us to unite. We gotta pass legislation to help each other, we all in this together. All of us in this together, we ain't got nobody else. Listen to me, people. Listen to me, carbonated people. Ain't nobody gonna save us but us. Therefore, we gotta follow the instructions. Africa has already decolonized. The, the, the vast majority of the islands on planet Earth have already been colonized by using these same reforms I'm talking about. We, we the carbonated people, it was commonly known as the West, are the last ones to be colonized because we the most arrogant people on planet Earth. Our eagles are so big and all the thing we doing is selling each other out just to make two cents on a dollar. That time is up. We gonna do this right or we ain't gonna do it at all. And those who wanna stay over there with the colonists, stay over behind over there with your packages. But you, but you have an opportunity now to return to Morocco and be a moral person, a person of ethics. Come over here and do what you can to help the state. It's not about the state can do for you, it's about what you can do for the state. And if you take care of the state, the state will automatically, through reciprocity, take care of you and your affairs. You see? So. Maybe this legislative act, Section 4, title is what?
Evidence of immediate renunciation of U.S. citizenship. A, foreign naturalization of a Moor subject ceases to exist at the immediate date in time that the Moor subject becomes a former Moor subject by way of application and acceptance by the Moors state Moxen. B, any purported arrangement dated October 8th of 1958, uh, March 17th of 1959 between the principals of the Kingdom of Morocco and the United States of America with the intent to supervise the impossibility of performance for native Moors to declare their Moroccan nationality and declare allegiance to a Moors state government in the Moors empire shall be deemed an act of genocide and racial for native Moors to declare their Moroccan nationality and declare allegiance to a Moor state government in the Moorish Empire shall be deemed an act of genocide and racial discrimination in whole or in part as contrary to human rights and the periphery norms of international law.
All right, so in section four, it's about evidence of immediate renunciation of the United States citizenship. So who can now protect the Moors? Now the state and the government of the Empire Morocco can give evidence to the United States that that Moor is now a former Moor subject, that Moor now is former, that Moor has now repatriated back to the state, and now it's the state's obligation to protect that Moor. And now showing the United States of America, that Moor is no longer American. That Moor is no longer naturalized. That's the state's obligation to do that. You see? So this is legislation, right? I, I, we got other subsection, there's subsection five, et cetera, right? I just wanted to get a Moors snapshot of what legislation, uh, looks like, right? So this is NPAC legislation. We, we have passed this legislation in twenty twenty-three, you see? Let, let me show you what that looks like. This Empire Morocco is gonna do the same thing in the year twenty twenty-four. Uh, Nova, from the top.
Former Moor Subject Act. One, was ratified by the House of Dalila Aziz dated October sixteenth of twenty twenty-three. Two, was ratified by the Wazir al-Rais dated October sixteenth of twenty twenty-three. Three, notification to the United Nations Secretary General on, um, dated October seventeenth of twenty twenty-three. Four, notification to the United States and the Colo- and Colorado dated October seventeenth of twenty twenty-three. Five, notification to the Wazir Regional Council dated October seventeenth of twenty twenty-three. And six, entered into full force and effect dated October seventeenth of twenty twenty-three, and it was promulgated by the Wazir al-Rais dated October seventeenth of twenty twenty-three.
All right, so this is called, uh, ratified, deposited, and promulgated. These are procedural steps, procedural law we have to take. This is what's called Circle Seven. Circle Seven is state of facts, the Moors are learning how to become competent Moors. We're the competent authority of our states. You see? And this is something that NPAC did back in the year twenty twenty-three. The Empire Morocco will, 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 will more than likely, uh, take some of the same similar language of the, of this legislative act that NPAC, NPAC had passed this law for the Former Moor Subject Act, which is legislation. Right? Okay, let's go back, because we gotta fix this, gotta help the Moors to fix this. So, so now from the top. Okay, Nova.
The Empire Morocco and the several internal Moor states have five lawful rights to keep the United States of America, its organs, and its citizens under civil and criminal jurisdiction in Morocco to this end by: One, using their treaty rights, two, constitutional rights, three, legislative right, four, charter of the United Nations right, and five, the ICJ ruling of nineteen fifty-two right.
All right, so we're talking rights, so once we fully ratified, deposited, promulgated the constitution for Empire Morocco, and then that constitution will give us rights. And it give us a right to become a signatory power to the treaties for the Empire Morocco. Now we being enforced the Treaty of Madrid through our constitution, our state, then our state will write legislative acts such as the Former Moor Subject Act, right? But then we also being used the Charter of the United Nations rights under Article Seventy-three, right? Because under Article Seventy-three, we need a constitution, and we started enforcing the rights to decolonize, then what? We can do what? Self-governed, because the Charter of the United Nations, Article Seventy-three, gives colonized territories and people a right to self-govern. There's number five, the ICJ ruling, now we can flip it, because now we can use that same ICJ ruling of nineteen fifty-two to our advantage, because the United Nations already told the United States of America that, that all the Moors have to do is enforce their treaties, their Moroccan laws, their Moroccan regulations, all through the competent Council of Court in order to enforce it. So why don't I take the Moors through that exercise? Okay. Why, why don't I take the Moors through that exercise? Okay. Now I'm gonna take you back to the ex-patriation document of nineteen oh-six. And in that document, Hoffman Phillips already warned the United States, what was gonna happen if these Moors wake up? These Moors wake up and enforce the Treaty Madrid Article Fifteen. What was gonna happen next? Okay. Look, look, look what Hoffman Phillips said in nineteen oh-six about the passive Moors having utilized the treaty rights yet, right here, Nova.
The above ruling has never yet been acted upon.
Pause. What above ruling? What they, what did Hoffman Phillips talking about? Article Fifteen of the Treaty of Madrid had never been acted upon, even in nineteen oh-six, the Moors hadn't woke up and used their own treaty rights yet. Okay. So right here. Read it again.
The above ruling has never yet been acted upon, and should this at any time be contemplated seriously, a large number of naturalized people, Americans and others residing in Morocco would be affected thereby.
Pause. So Hoffman Phillips is telling the United States that above ruling has never yet been acted upon, Article Fifteen, the Moors haven't been using the portal as Dorothy to return back to Morocco to choose entire submission to the laws of the empire's government. The Moors hadn't done it. So he says the above ruling has never yet been acted upon, and should this at any time be contemplated seriously, by who? The Moors. A large number of naturalized people, who the naturalized people? The Moors are now going back to be Moroccans, they say the Moroccans and Americans, who's Americans? The Americans are the citizen of United States of America that Sidi Mohammed recognized. The Americans came from Great Britain and Europe, right? So, right here, it talks about the Americans are gonna be affected too, because the Moors know that they're now Moroccans. Right? So anybody residing in Morocco, Empire Morocco would be affected thereby, once these Moors wake up. The United States of America is gonna be affected. Why? Because the United States of America knows it's what? An inferior, they are an inferior state. And their government is inferior, and their citizens, and their several Union States are all inferior to the Empire Morocco and the Moors government. They've always known that the United States of America, the United States federal government, and the several Union States and their citizens are all inferior to the Empire Morocco and its government of Moors. They've always known this. Right? Section four and five. Nova.
Four and five. Residents in foreign parts does not affect the nationality of Moorish subjects, and the Moorish government has no means of protecting its subjects permanently residing in other countries, with the exception of a so-called Moorish consular at Gibraltar and a Moorish agent at Cairo, Egypt.
Read it again.
Four and five. Residents in foreign parts does not affect the nationality of Moorish subjects, and the Moorish government has no means of protecting its subjects permanently residing in other countries, with the exception of a so-called Moorish consul at Gibraltar and a Moorish agent at Cairo, Egypt.
Right? So who wrote this? Hoffman Phillips, right? Hoffman Phillips is sitting here telling the United States, the Moors government cannot protect, you see that? The Moors government, I'm gonna read this over again, the Moors government cannot, cannot protect its own people. At that time, because the Moors government was what? Fractalized. That was, the Moors government wasn't protecting all the Moors like it was supposed to. This was nineteen oh-six. So it says from the top. Okay, from the top it says, section four and five. This is what we gotta reverse, we gotta, we gotta replay that reverse Uno card on them, right? We gotta show them that the Moors government can protect its own. Okay, section four and five. Residents in a, in foreign parts does not affect the nationality of Moor subjects, and the Moorish government has no means of protecting its subjects permanently residing in other countries. I'm reading again. The Moors government has no means of protecting its subjects permanently residing in other countries, this is what they said in nineteen oh-six. The Moors government has no means of protecting its subjects permanently residing in other countries. Well, guess what? They said that in nineteen oh-six? But now in the year twenty twenty-four, guess what we gonna do now? They won't be able to say that no more. They won't be able to say that no more, because now we're coming with the constitution for the Empire Morocco, that way we can provide protections for our own people, for the Moors. So here's what I want the Moors to understand, as I start to close out. Uh, I know I went off script a lot today, because I'm kind of passionate, because I'm, I'm sick and, sick and tired of being, sick and tired of these con artists hurting the sisters and hurting these brothers out here. Uh, but more importantly, it's all about the constitution for the Empire Morocco, this is the sovereign. This is the instructions that Dorothy had to follow. All the Moors are Dorothy. And all the Moors could not return to Morocco, they couldn't follow instructions, because we had no constitution, we had no state, the state was in a shallow grave. We have to, we have to do what? Re-instate the state, so that all the Moors could repatriate back to the state. Now we're doing it, we're working towards it. So with the Empire Morocco will be, this constitution will be ratified, deposited, and promulgated in the month of June twenty twenty-four. The Sultan will, will be reinstated on June eighth, twenty twenty-four. And now the Empire Morocco and the Sultan and the Moors government will be able to provide protections for our brothers and sisters to be able to come back home. And once we come back home, and we start operating the government, and then we can do what? Collect taxes. All right? We're talking about this more in the future about taxes, all right? With that being said, I end with that. Islam.